At seven o'clock, and could we have the roll call, please?
Yes.
Councilmembers Powers, Singleton?
Here.
Shelton, Cruz?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
I would invite you to join me in a moment of silent prayer. After that, Scout Troop 119 will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Color Guard's attention. Audience, please remove all hats and visors. Color Guard advance. Prepare to post colors. Color Guard propose colors. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Color Guard dismissed. Thank you. Please be seated.
Just so everyone knows, we do have two council members, members missing tonight. Councilmember Shelton is under the weather, and Vice Mayor Powers is enjoying some time away.
Thank you. Would you please read the video statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast and Shore West Cable Systems. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.saxmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at 9:00 a.m. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at A DVD copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
Thank you. I would now ask for agenda approval. Are there any additions or deletions?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull item G4, please, and have it move to the next meeting.
G4. Do we need to vote on that? It's a regular item on the agenda.
If the full council's in consensus, then there's no reason to vote on it. If there's any member that wishes to have it voted on, then you ought to do so.
I'm agreeable with pulling it for the next meeting. Councilman Singleton, do you have any wishes on that?
Um, no, I can agree with that for now, yeah.
Okay. So then, item 64 will be pulled and continued to the next meeting.
G4.
I'm sorry, G4. Did I say 64?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so the next item then would be presentation.
Presentation, Employee Recognition Program. Call it useless.
Is that okay? Is that okay? Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Tonight, my presentation is on our new program, our new City of Galt Employee Recognition Program, and it's called You Make the Difference. As you probably remember, in July 2011, in one of our strategic planning sessions, one of the goals was to develop and implement an employee recognition program. And since that time, we have been working on this program. We started with a department head committee who brainstormed various ideas and not only recognition programs, awards that could be given to the employees who were recognized in the program. And the committee ultimately proposed two programs to the city manager. And through those discussions, we then proceeded to have small employee meetings with groups of employees that were, to get input, because we wanted to make sure the success of the program was something that the employees would want to participate in and felt that it was worthwhile. And that was a really good process, because what happened next was employees were very vocal and had a lot of great suggestions, and they definitely told us what ideas they liked and what they didn't. And so what we did, we took those suggestions and created one program. Because initially, the department head committee was going to propose two programs. So at the end of the day, we have one program. And another suggestion that they came up with is that if you are recognized in the You Make the Difference program, that one of the options that you can choose is to have lunch with the city manager. And so I want you to make everybody know Jason tonight. So he was a little taken aback at first, going, "Are you sure?" And then it definitely came from the employees, and so we're kind of proud about that, because I think that says something about our city manager. The goal for the program are really to recognize fellow employees, to exemplify the City of Galt's vision and values. So this program is not only for, you know, maybe a supervisor to recognize their employees, it's also for fellow employees, and to provide an opportunity for employees to let their coworkers know their hard work is noticed and appreciated. Examples that we've come up with, and I'm sure there are many more, are to, well, first is outstanding effort to assist in a project, just working with coworkers. We always, you know, there are always employees that really go up above and beyond, and those are the type of situation and individuals that we want to recognize. Those that provide excellent customer service, individuals that personify the team player approach in work interactions, so that it's not just one person, you know, the whole city works together to reach our common goals and to make the city, you know, a great, a place to work and live. Also exhibit willingness to work responsibly with others and look for solutions to the problems, and problems, you know, that get resolved on the, at the lowest level, not taking them up to the highest level. Exemplify the vision and values of the City of Galt, and then suggest process improvements or cost-saving measures. So those are the kind of ideas that the committee came up with, that an employee, they would be recognized for any of those actions. So, how the process works is that the nominating employee will complete the You Make the Difference forms, and I'll show you an example of that in the following slide. And that will be sent, the original goes to the employee, and a copy goes to Human Resources. And just to, we've included all employees in this program. Any, if you're part-time or temporary, you can nominate or be nominated in the program. And this is what the program, I mean, excuse me, what the form looks like. Again, the original goes to the employee, so that they know that they have done something that someone has taken notice of, and the copy goes to Human Resources. And all of the copies are reviewed by the city manager. And how they're recognized is that we're going to, every quarter, we're going to keep all of the, all of the different forms, and there'll be a drawing. And the winners will receive two hours off of work to be used in the next quarter, and the choice of lunch with the city manager, or they can also, or they can get a gift card to a local restaurant. So that's how they are recognized, and again, that will be every quarter. And so far, so good. This program has rolled out on January 20th, and since that time, more than 15 employees have been recognized by their peers. The debut quarterly drawing will be held the first week in April. So we're off to a good start, and it's kind of an exciting program. Any questions? Paul? Sure.
Uh, Paula, I really have to congratulate you on this program. I really, well, first of all, we'll see how popular Mr. Bearman is. What a great concept to involve all the employees of our city, because it shows that we're team players, and we got a good team going, and it keeps that morale going and patting them on the back for travel done. So thank you very much for doing that, and I thank the employees for putting their input in, too. I think it's a great, great program. Can't wait to see how successful it'll be, and how busy Jason will be. That doesn't mean you can count our lunches either.
I would just add to what Councilman Singleton said. I think it sounds like an exciting program. I love the idea that the employees decided to have the city manager feed them.
Yeah.
Thank you again. Okay, public comments?
No McDonald's.
I was gonna say, you're gonna have to keep up your cardio, because you're gonna be eating out a lot, and you're gonna be gaining some weight there, but...
Once a quarter.
Yeah, okay.
Under Government Code, Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject jurisdiction of the city council, and limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers, and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk. All my speaker sheets are on one item, the transit item. Is there anyone who has any general comments?
Then, if you would read the consent calendar, please.
I will. We have five items tonight. The first one, approval of the minutes of the special and regular meetings of February 7, 2012. Number two, approval of the City of Galt warrants. Number three, adoption of an ordinance amending Chapter 3.32 of the Municipal Code to eliminate a credit against the payment of taxes payable to the redevelopment agency. Number four, a resolution of the City of Galt as successor agency of the redevelopment agency, adopting an enforceable obligation payment schedule. And number five, a resolution of the City of Galt as successor agency of the redevelopment agency, adopting a draft recognized obligation payment schedule.
Move to accept consent.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I just asked for a little explanation before we continue, and I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't have time to get the question. You explain that just a little bit to us.
The kicker item?
Well, this, the number three on that, credit against payment of taxes payable to the redevelopment agency.
Um, yes, councilmember. This is an item that first came to council about a month ago as an urgency ordinance. And basically, with the elimination of the redevelopment agency, there's a provision in the municipal code that provides for a credit against taxes received by the redevelopment agency. Since the agency's no longer in existence, there's no reason to have that provision in the municipal code. The other reason to take it out is to eliminate an ambiguity, and to make it very clear that all sales tax revenues go directly to the city. So we did the urgency ordinance about a month ago, and then I wanted to, I recommended to the council that we come back and adopt it in the traditional fashion. It was introduced at the last meeting, and if the council acts on it this evening, it would actually adopt that ordinance.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I'd like to sit in a second.
Okay. So we do have a first and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Singleton? Vice Mayor Powers? Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
With two abs.
With two. Motion is passed unanimously. Next item, schedule matters?
No schedule.
No schedule matters? Okay.
Next item, under City Council's office, appointment by mayor to AB 1126 Oversight Board. I think I said that wrong. Mayor Payne?
Mayor, with your permission, could I provide some introductory comments regarding this, this item?
I would appreciate it.
Okay. As you may recall, at the beginning of February, the redevelopment agency was abolished, and the city elected to become a successor agency to the redevelopment agency pursuant to what's commonly known as AB 26, the law that eliminated redevelopment agencies. An additional part to that law provides for the formation of oversight boards to review the actions of the city as successor agency. The oversight board is comprised of seven members, and the mayor gets to appoint two individuals to that oversight board. So the action this evening is to provide an opportunity for you, mayor, to make those two appointments. The first one is a member appointed by the mayor for the city that formed the redevelopment agency. So it can be any individual that you so desire. There's no limitations on who can serve in that capacity. Your second appointment is one member representing the employees of the former redevelopment agency appointed by the mayor. So that person would have to be an individual that was one of the employees that served the former redevelopment agency.
Okay, thank you. And for my appointments, for the person representing the employees, I've asked Inez Cherry, who is our Director of Finance, to accept that appointment. I think she's highly qualified, especially for this position. Does that mean you do it?
Oh, yes.
And for the person at large, I've asked Terry Parker, who's familiar with development, and I spoke to her earlier, and she agreed to serve. So those are my two appointments. Do we need to have any approval from the other council members? Or just me?
No, ma'am. It's just your direct appointment, because it does not provide for council action on it. The reason we did it in open session is so that it would be part of the record of tonight's proceedings.
Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
Next item, a proclamation declaring Bike Month for the month of May.
Okay. As you may or may not know, the city and the schools have joined together in something called CAFS, which stands for Cities and Schools Together. And at the last CAFS meeting, we decided to declare May as Bicycle Month. And it is a program that is supported by CACOG, the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, for a lot of reasons. One is, of course, for the health reasons. Riding your bicycle gives you good exercise. Another one is because if you're riding your bicycle, you're not in your car, polluting the air. And most recently, another advantage is going to be avoiding the $5 a gallon gas cost. We plan to have some various activities during the month of May, along with the schools. One of the things we want to emphasize, and I'm glad to see so many young people here tonight, is that there are laws about riding your bicycle, where, which side of the road you can ride it on, and what you have to observe. So in the month of May, we're going to take some special time to remind everybody for safety, as well as have fun recreating. So, let's see. Do we need to vote on this proclamation?
To approve the proclamation.
Do we need a, someone to make the motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmembers, do you have any questions? Oh, I wanted to share something with you to support, to get you to agree with me. I got this out of the, I think it was in the, it was in the Bee sometime called Power to the Pedal. And again, they say bicycle commuters leave their cars and gasoline bills far behind. So it's an interesting article that I think everyone is thinking about saving money from gasoline, spending it on gasoline. So I would entertain a motion, hopefully, from one of my councilmembers.
Move to approve your proclamation.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I guess I would have the second second.
That would be great.
Okay.
Okay, we do have a first and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Okay, Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
So we will declare May the month of the bicycle. Thank you. Okay, next item.
Next item, Treasurer's Office. Treasurer's report for the period ending December 2011.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Mayor, councilmembers. Being that we have some American government students here in the audience tonight, I just wanted to go over a few things as far as how the city invests their money. Like any, any entity and any person, the city has a main checking account. And then beside that, we have, we put money in with the state of California. Those are called LEAF funds, standing for Local Agency Investment Fund. Then, besides those two, we look for, I want to say, safe and liquid, and then yield, and we get the most yield at different places. And that's, that's a part of my, my position, is I look for those things. We have approximately, just invested locally here at Farmers and Merchants Bank and at Premier West Bank with money markets and CDs. We have a, close to about $15 million invested just with local institutions. You always hear the adage, shop local. Well, the city invests local, and I think, which is, which is very important. I know it follows the philosophy of the city. Besides that, then, we have what are called government agencies, which are bonds that the city buys. And those are, those are referred to as callable bonds, which means that a government agency like the Federal Home Loan Bank, or Freddie Mac, or Fannie Mae, they can call those bonds back at any particular time if, say, rates go down. And during the first six months of this fiscal year, there were seven, six bonds that the city had earning 1.5% to 2% that they in fact called back because rates had dropped. And so now, I had to reinvest those same monies, but not at 1.5% to 2%, I had to go closer to 1%. As a matter of fact, just last week, I had to buy one at .75, so only 3/4 of 1%. So what I'm trying to show is, interest rates are continuing, continuing, continuing to decrease. So that's, that's just the way, the nature of the, of the business right now. And in the first six months, the city earned a total amount of interest of $220,000 approximately. So with that, I'll, I'll wake the councilmembers up, and I'll say, if you can, please approve the Treasurer's Report for December 2011, and I'll answer any questions if you have them.
Do we have any questions from the councilmembers, who I am sure were all awake whenever you're talking about our money?
I'm sure. I'm sure.
I was listening, too.
I was, too.
Okay.
If there are no questions, is there a motion to accept the Treasurer's Report?
About time I make a motion to accept this time.
Thank you. Do we have a second? We do have a first and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Okay, Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
With two absent. I'd say the same.
Okay. We have unanimously accepted the Treasurer's Report.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
You could beat up too bad.
Okay. Next item, please.
Next item, okay, number four was called, so we'll go on to the Public Works Department, California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation, First Amendment to Agreement to Provide Utility Services.
Sorry, I was running on budget. This contract amendment is the latest in a series of contract amendments and agreements that the city has a long history with the CDC. And it hopefully kind of sets them down now at the end of their line, where they would have sewage treatment capacity, because they are an out-of-city customer, and they need to be under a contract approved by the city council. And the history of this has been one where we've had temporary agreements for some time now, and now that our plant has been upgraded and has enough capacity to handle them, we were comfortable with granting them permanent capacity, as we would any other customer. The bright side of this is that with that, they would now pay their final connection fees, which amounts to a little over $600,000, which we can certainly use the money. And they do pay a surcharge for having out-of-city service. So really, from a business standpoint, this is a good arrangement for the city. You have any questions? I'd be glad to answer.
Questions from the council?
I have none.
Okay, then, I would entertain a motion.
I will read up the resolution.
Now, a second?
We have a second. Roll call vote, please.
Okay, Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Motion is passed unanimously. Do we need to have a separate vote on that? There were two items. One was for the budget change?
Right.
And one was for the resolution?
If that wasn't in the motion, then I'd recommend I do the second motion to approve the budget change.
Okay. So we do need a motion?
Budget change.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
All right. We have a first and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
So the second part of that action was also approved unanimously.
And the first part was adopting the resolution.
Correct. Next item.
Next item, Public Works as well, South County, South County Transit Link Short Range Transit Plan Amendment.
The matter before you this evening for consideration is the endorsement of the Sacramento County Short Range Transit Plan Amendment for 2012. Transit services in the City of Galt and the South Sacramento County area is provided with a joint service agreement between the county and the city. With that being said, the city is not a lead agency. Sacramento County is the actual lead agency. They administer the contracts, and they approve any transit service changes that will be made. The city has the right to review and make recommended changes as AC5, or that means the city members. Each year, the state of California provides local agencies transportation development act funds. These funds are for transit needs, including transit improvements. Out of the Transit Development Act, we get local transportation funds. We get state transit funds. The local transportation funds are basically for streets, roads, construction improvements, et cetera. The state transit assistance funds are basically that they're for capital acquisitions. They are for your bicycle improvements, your shelters, et cetera. As part of getting continued funding through the Transportation Development Act, there is a mandated public transportation process. The PDA sets forth a very detailed process in order to ensure that transit needs are met. The first part of the process is what we're going to address tonight, which is the short-range transit plan. The second part of the process will be the unmet transit need term, which is held annually. The next meeting for the unmet transit needs will be next Wednesday, excuse me, next Tuesday, in council chambers between the hours of 2:00 and 4:00. Tonight again, as I stated, we're going to be focusing on the short-range transit plan. The short-range transit plan basically is a managerial tool for senior members and those that are interested in chance in transit, and those that approve changes to go about and decide what steps needs the needs of the county. With that being said, I'm going to turn, I'm gonna, excuse me, I'm gonna turn it over to Enkodi Otto. He is with the Sacramento Agency, the Council of Governments. He will be addressing the short-range transit plan, because they actually wrote the document and did the analysis. We also have Kimberly Holland's work here. She is with Sora. Holland work here. She is with Store Transit. She will be able to address any maintenance and operation questions that you may have. At the end of the proceedings, and we'll go ahead and we can answer any questions that you might have, we also have handouts regarding the services that the city currently provides. So we have your bus routes, your dollar rides, your Highway 99, and your commuter service. So with that being said, Mr. Coliello?
I mean, I should have introduced Dolores Martinez, who is the, a city employee, by the way, in case you haven't met her, who handles our transit matters and public works.
Thank you, Dolores.
Thank you, Dolores. Is it working?
Barely.
Barely. Adjust the volume here.
Go ahead.
Okay. Maybe a little better right now?
No.
Yeah.
Let me give you a hand.
Okay, I'll use the handheld.
Okay, Dolores gave a pretty good overview of why we do the short-range transit plan update. That's my first slide. I do have twenty-seven slides, so I'm going to try to get through it in ten minutes. So time me, because I know we have a lot of people who want to speak on this matter, and that's important to hear them. So we're looking to improve the current Highway 99 service that operates from Lodi to Galton, then on up to the Florin Road Transfer Center in South Sacramento. We're also looking to improve the Delta Route performance. The Delta Route runs from Galton on down to Ileton, and then back over to Lodi and back. And then we're looking to implement a recommended commuter service from Galton to downtown and midtown Sacramento that was recommended in the 2008 Short Range Transit Plan. And hopefully, the sum of all these things will improve the fare box recovery ratio for the system. So this is the order of operations I'm going to have for the presentation. We have the Highway 99 service I'm going to go over first, some of the recommendations we have there, then the commuter, and then the Delta. This is the current Highway 99 service. The map on your left, let me see if that laser pointer works. But the map on the left, it sort of starts down in Lodi. It operates hourly. It goes Lodi to Galton, and then on up to a stop on Elk Road Boulevard in Elk Road, and then on up to the Florin Mall at 65th Street. The schedule actually has an arrow on it. After nineteen-twenty, please eliminate those last two lines. I'm not sure how they got on there. But it's hourly service from the lead hour of five-twenty in the morning to seven-twenty at night. Unfortunately, we left it at nineteen-twenty, which is actually seven-twenty at night. So that's the current service that operates right now. Most of the ridership is between Lodi and Galton. There is ridership, about fifty to sixty riders. Oh, thank you, Richard. Between Lodi-Galt, and then on up to the Florin Mall area per day. But like I said, most of the riders are between Lodi and Galton. The Elk Road Boulevard service adjustment is in the plan as, it was originally in the plan as a recommended elimination, to eliminate the service to Elk Road Boulevard. However, back in January twenty-fourth, we had a public meeting here to solicit input from the community. And one of the things we found was that there were really strong, there was a very strong case to maintain service to the Elk Road Boulevard stop in some fashion. So what we've done, we've met after that meeting on January twenty-fourth to go over the comments. And we're going to leave that Elk Road Boulevard stop in there as what's called a demand response. So those folks wishing to go to Elk Road Boulevard can call ahead and schedule that the bus drop them off, or pick them up there. They can schedule one ride, or they can do what's called a subscription service, so they can have a regular, you know, on the five-twenty bus, I, you know, I go to Elk Road Boulevard to catch another connection on E-Trans on a daily basis. So that's a subscription.
And so what's different here is now they have to call and say they want to get off at the Elk Road Boulevard, whereas in past, it was a regular stop.
That's correct. Because the ridership is very low on that stop. But there are riders there who have very good reason to have their service maintained.
Okay, thank you.
Now, the Florin Mall stop, and this is where I think you may hear most of your speakers tonight, referring to the Florin Mall Transit Center, where there used to be the Florin Mall there. And now it's a Walmart. It's a little less friendly than it was maybe when the mall was there, I'm not sure. But basically, what's happening is ridership at that location is pretty stagnant. RT has cut out their express service that ran from the Florin Mall on up at Stockton Boulevard into downtown Sacramento that was called the Route 50E. There's still pretty good connections to Sacramento RT there, but the ridership just is not materializing. It's not growing over the years. It's also not the safest location for a transit transfer center. There isn't really good lighting, as I read up there. There isn't eyes on the street. So we're proposing to move that over to Consumus River College, and I'll get to that in a second. So by moving it over to Consumus River College, one of the things that I'm most concerned about is who's losing their service. We know that there's a substantial market over CRC for service, and we're trying to hit that market and develop new ridership out of the city here, not of Lodi, and the Delta, and educational opportunities. So I have a list up there. RT does provide connections via the Route 55 to CRC. However, those connections do not start as early in the morning as they could. In other words, the Highway 99 service starts, because it starts at five-twenty in the morning, gets there before RT starts running between CRC and Florin Road. But some of the comments we had in the public hearing were students attending Sacramento State, and we're hoping that the service to downtown via the commuter service will help mitigate or lessen the impact to them. It actually might improve some of their connections into Sac State. And also, between Consumus River College and the Meadowview Light Rail Station, E-Trans runs the Route 156, and Sac RT, although I don't have it up there, runs the Route 56. And both of those are free of charge if you have an RT pass, which many of the riders do. If they're college students going to Sac State, they ride RT and E-Trans for free. Now, another exciting thing about CRC in the near future is the future light rail connection being developed or planned right now between Meadowview and CRC. If anyone's looked at the Federal Transit Administration's budget that the President, or the Executive Office released recently, request for FY13, federal fiscal year thirteen, there is money in there to help move that project forward. That's the extension down to CRC. We're expecting what's called a full funding grant agreement, probably sometime around next year or so, but to enter what's called final design this summer. And that final design basically allows them to proceed one step closer to construction of that light rail connection at CRC. Also, CRC offers connections to every E-Trans local route, so that by going to CRC, not only are we going into a future light rail connection, but we're also expanding the reach of the service into the entire city of Elk Grove. Whereas right now, at the Elk Road Boulevard stop, there's only a couple of route connections there for E-Trans. Here's the proposed schedule. On the bottom, one of the things we're going to ask a few folks, the city council members, to think about in the future is, if you want to fund expanded service beyond the seven-thirty hour. Right now, there's enough money in the systems operating budget to have the service to about seven-thirty at night. But there are a lot of classes in the evening. There's a lot of transit connections that people are trying to get to, to and from the city to connect there. And so we're going to need, if you want to go beyond the seven-thirty hour, let's say up to 10:00 PM, it's going to require additional funding. And the city would have to kick in a certain portion of that, about sixty percent, I believe. Here's the existing Highway 99 fares. And the reason why I'm putting ahead of the fares is because we have significant fare adjustments. We're going down. We're bringing the fares way down, and I'll show you that in just a second. So take a look at that real quick. Monthly pass, a hundred and forty dollars a month. For a student, it's seventy dollars, okay? We're proposing to bring that down to forty-five dollars for a student, and seventy-five dollars for the general monthly pass. That can also be used on the Delta Route. We're also lowering the one-way trip from four dollars down to three, and from five dollars down to four for those folks going from Lodi on up to CRC. Finally, for the Highway 99 service, we're recommending that we eliminate the Florin Mall stop and adjust that to Consumus River College. And then, not only to Consumus River College, but stop at, trying to meet at CRC, but it's going to go into CRC, then it's going to head north along Greysville to the South Sacramento Hospitals, Kaiser Hospital, Methodist, and all those doctors' offices, et cetera, up there, and then return to CRC and bring the folks back. So we're trying not only to expand the educational opportunities, but employment and medical access opportunities for folks. If this is approved for you folks, I'm going to bring it to the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. And if they approve it, we're hoping that the Highway 99 service change could be initiated sometime in fiscal year twelve. I mean, okay, new year twelve. Now, moving on to the downtown service, the second part here. But not right now, there's no existing direct service to downtown and midtown Sacramento for adult residents via transit. Here's the proposed route. Now, maybe I'm going to use a laser pointer. I'm not going to get you, Mayor, but let me try. Can everyone see that? Okay? So the proposed route is going to originate here at City Hall, and then it's going to travel up 99, go north, and stop at the Twin Cities Road Park and Ryan. We've already got approval from Caltrans to use that location, and there's some money, hopefully, in the future to improve that location and make it a little safer. And then it's going to come on 99, get off. This is the RT 29th Street Light Rail Station, and it connects to a couple RT routes, 67 and 68. Over here is the Sacramento County Department of Human Assistance, their main office right over here. This is Sutter Hospital in the main office.
Excuse me. What's the main exit on that? Is that Q Street? T Street.
T Street. Okay. And over here is the new Sutter Hospital, that really large new Sutter Hospital there. Also, from 29th Street, you can catch the Mercy Hospital Shuttle if you get on the light rail, which might be hard if you're kind of sick. But you can go one stop over to catch the UC Davis Shuttle. So we're going to stop here. There's going to be another stop right around Sutter's Ford here. It's going to come on up, L Street. The plan right now is to hook the ride onto 16th, and then back up I with a stop here, and then another stop over by City Hall, and then another stop by the Capitol, and then come back down Q Street, Calpers is over here. And then another stop by Blood Source. This is the 16th Street Light Rail Transfer Center, so transfers Blue Line and Gold Line. And there's a sheltered stop right by Blood Source, and then another stop at 29th, then back down to Galton. The plan right now is for three round trips per weekday, morning run, midday run, and evening run. These are the proposed fares. We've got four dollars for an adult, monthly pass of a hundred and twenty, and a ten-ride pass option at thirty-five. Students and seniors and disabled are discounted fifty percent. Now, some of the things here, this is the estimated cost provided by store or transportation. They're the contractor that operates the SCT link service right now. We're looking at about a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars per year, but for the first five years of this service, will be paid for out of Sacramento County Local Transportation Fund balance money. They have about, almost eight-hundred thousand dollars of local transportation fund balance. So that's going to help fund this service for the first five years. The one of the things we want to do is we want to produce a service that performs strongly, that meets these, the TDA has a law for fare box recovery ratios, make sure it's an efficient transit service. So after the first year, one of the milestones is to have a ten percent fare box recovery ratio. So that equates to about fourteen one-way trips per day, or seven passengers each way per day. It's not a lot of passengers for the first year. Then we move on up to the second year, and it's just add seven one-way trips, all the way to the third year. And basically, if we don't meet those milestones at the first year, second year, third year, we need to take a look at the service. And, you know, if things aren't looking, they'll possibly eliminate the service. So those are performance metrics to try to meet the TDA fare box recovery ratio requirement. What happens after the five years, five or six years or so of funding, how do we get to fund this service? Right now, the city of Galton pays sixty percent, the county pays forty percent of the total service cost for SCT link. I have some ideas up here. I have the, from the Secog MTP Metropolitan Transportation Plan, there's a suggested measure B in there, with fifty percent going to transit, fifty percent to roads. Right now, the measure A out there in Sac County, all the money goes to paratransit in Sac RT. You don't get any here down in Galton. But Secog, with the MTP, has proposed giving that money up to the jurisdictions to provide more even coverage for transit throughout the Sacramento County area. There's also something like, it's called JARC, or Job Access Reverse Commute. And one of the things that's going into Sacramento that the service is kind of unique is coming back, we're going to have the door open. So we'll accept riders coming back, even in the morning, and those are reverse commute options. And that may allow the ability to fund some of the operation, at least fifty percent of it, what's called JARC funding from the Federal Transit Administration. Another option that may not be as popular here within the city is, right now, the city of Galton, last year in their last Transportation Delta Mac claim to me, asked for a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars for their Streets and Roads program. And that's another source of funding that is a council. You can deliberate and debate about whether or not you want to rob your Streets and Roads programs to fund public transit. That's a decision I can't make. Those are the suggested times. Okay, for the last part of the presentation, the Delta Route. The Delta Route, as I mentioned before, goes from Galton down to Ileton via Twin Cities Road, then down Route 160, and then back on over Highway 12, the Lodi. There's four round trips per weekday. It's a standard fixed route. There's very few riders on this route, but there are riders, and they're important. It's a long route to do the actual route. It takes about three hours to complete. This is the current schedule. There's the map of it. So we'll have some suggested changes. What we've suggested to do is the Lodi to Ileton segment, this is often zero riders on that segment. So the bus is just running empty back and forth along Highway 12. It's not a mile. It's like twenty miles. So what we're proposing to do is eliminate the Ileton to Lodi segment, and increase the Galto-Ileton segment from four round trips to five. However, right now, you don't need to call ahead. You just wait for the bus to the bus stop, and it'll pick you up. Or you can call ahead if you're elderly or disabled. You can, the bus will come and deviate three fourths a mile off the route, one's safe to do so. But what we're saying is to eliminate the possibility of the bus running empty along the route to improve efficiency that you call, just like the Elk Road Boulevard stop, about twenty-four hours in advance to plan your ride, or you can have a subscription service. We're hoping to improve the fare box recovery ratio on this service, but also to increase from four to five round trips. And I mentioned there's very few passengers from Lodi-Ileton. Some of the passengers are actually coming from Rio Vista, transferring in Ileton, and then going over to Lodi. We're looking at adding a new stop on the Delta Route at the planned Walmart here in Galton to help expand some of the shopping opportunities that may be lost by service eliminated to the Lodi Walmart. Here's the proposed scheduler, subject to adjustment to match the criteria. Here's the fares. Top is existing. Bottom is proposed. So we're actually looking at reducing some fares. Now, while I say Delta to CRC, please be aware that's Delta, and then transfer to Highway 99 here at City Hall, and then on up to CRC. But we also have those monthly student passes available to the folks in the Delta in the monthly pass. And here's the final recommendations. Adjust the Highway 99 service to serve CRC and South Sacramento Hospitals. Establish commuter service to downtown Sacramento sometime early this spring, with three round trips per day. And remove the Ileton to Lodi segment of the Delta Route, and increase frequencies between Ileton and Galton. And I'm ready for questions.
Okay. I think we have a number of requests to speak, and I think we will go to the audience and then come back to the council members after we've heard from the audience at this point.
Okay, just so the audience knows, the timer over here is broken. You will be looking at that timer, so. Mike Barnbaum.
And you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Payne, and members of the council, and the audience, city staff. My name is Mike Barnbaum. Several years ago, I brought a lot of this up at an unmet transit needs hearing in the city of Elk Grove, which then was attended by Grace Molson and Mike Wiley. And Grace, at the time, thought it was a wonderful idea, and why it wasn't considered before, to provide service to Consumus River College. So fast forward, and we're here today. So fast forward, and we're here today. Um, I want to, uh, support, uh, mainly support the, uh, recommendations and endorse them to go forward to Sacramento County. Uh, but I would, uh, recommend, uh, some friendly amendments for you to consider in your motion tonight. Recommend that, uh, with the Highway 99 service going to Lodi, uh, that riders coming from Bakersfield on Amtrak's San Joaquin and making a connection to Highway 99, that you have your logo on the transit transfer that Amtrak California Services offer. And here's a sample shown to you today that is on the Capitol Corridor Service with a variety of transit logos. I recommend that the Highway 99 service operate from 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Saturday, Sunday, and holidays, uh, with connections at CRC to the future light rail. A rider could essentially travel on the South County Transit, Light Rail, and then Placer County Transit all the way to Auburn, while only making connections at the two light rail stations. A truly regional system. I recommend that the downtown commuter service, uh, run the three trips as recommended by staff, once every five hours. Arriving in downtown Sacramento at 6:45 AM and leaving at 7:15 AM. Arriving at 11:45 AM, leaving at 12:15 PM. And arriving at 4:45 PM, leaving at 5:15 PM. It gives the operator a little recovery time from the traffic, and it's needed under California Wage Order 9 anyway for rest and meal breaks. Uh, and I have information tonight with me about RT's Transit Renewal Plan, uh, and RT's existing service, I have their bus book as well. Mayor, I think frankly, from the years we've worked on this together, this really improves rural-urban connection strategies. On the transit side of things, a program, as you're well aware, that is under the Sacramento Area Council of Governments. Any questions?
Council, do you have any questions?
No.
I don't believe you do.
No.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so we'll look forward to having this continue to March 13th at 10:00 AM at 700 H Street in downtown Sacramento.
County Supervisors, change.
Yeah, Board of Supervisors, change. Thank you.
Virginia Menes?
Menes, sorry.
Menes.
My name is Virginia Menes, and I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. And I'm here on behalf of my position as a career center technician for the Galt Joint Union High School District. I've been in that position for the past five years. And while working in that position, I've dealt with many students and all their challenges. And some of the struggles have been transportation to Consumus River College. I've witnessed students try to carpool and start out carpooling, and then their schedules don't allow for them to continue. I've witnessed students have jobs and planning to save up money to purchase an inexpensive vehicle, and now the job market has fallen apart. Witnessed students laid off with no notice. All of a sudden, they don't have a job, and they're coming to me to look for a job in this unique economic situation that we're in. And so with students chasing many, facing many challenges today, I've been in support of the transit going to CRC for many years to alleviate the barriers that many of us face, not just students, but community members. And I know there are adult community members that take courses at CRC in the evenings as well. And so I would ask you to strongly consider this proposal to, um, provide transportation for our students in the community. Right now, um, in the Consumus River College District, we have over 500 students attending just from the 95632 zip code. That doesn't include Harold or Wilton or a campus. So I would hate to see these students drop out because the gas prices, uh, will be rising to $5 per gallon in June, as we're hearing rumors of. And so I just would be in support of eliminating any barriers, because right now, while the job market is, um, in distress, it's a perfect time for these students, these wonderful young people, to get their college credits out of the way, and so they can be prepared for when the market mounts again. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Virginia.
David Patton.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I've been a galt resident for 20 years. Um, my daughter is a, she's a student at Cristo Rey High School. That high school happens to be on the east side of 99, as someone would say, not in the safest location. This is a school for lower-income kids. It's a college preparatory school. And they're, they need a way there. A lot of their parents don't have driver's licenses, don't have cars, and this, and public transportation is for the lower-income morally to, to help them out. And cutting out Florin Road, that's cutting off their stop where possibly the school can get them. And it's an opportunity, the school promotes hard-working, college-bound students, and the, the school only takes lower-income kids. My daughter goes there, and we need to find her way to get there. And, and the, the link to Florin Mall is the link for them to get there. And by cutting Florin Mall off, by not going to where it's not safe, that's where lower-income kids are. That's where lower income is, that's what public transport, transportation is for. It's for those stops. So Florin Mall should be included. Um, you know, CRC and all that is great, love it, you know. Uh, you know, I, I, kids probably can end up there too. But, in the meantime, an opportunity for these kids to go to a college prep school, and it's not in the safe area, and they know it, it's a small, little, tiny pocket of, 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 just a wonderful surprise you'll find in that, in that neighborhood. These kids get a chance to go there, and this, the Florin Road Mall, keeping that open, that's, that's their line, that's their lifeline there. And so in, I'm asking the council and promotion of good citizenship, these kids live here in Galt, they're going to be good citizens, they're going to go to school, that's what this school does. 98% of their kids go to school, go to college. They're promoting good citizenship. Help those who can't afford. I'm asking you, keep the existing line to Florin Mall, so these amazing, ambitious, enlightened kids can pursue their education at a school of their choice. And not just, you know, we often stay here and go to these, you know, schools in Galt, they're great, but give these kids a choice, give them a chance to get out of where they are, lower-income kids here, that live right here in town. Give them a chance to go to a college prep school. And by cutting off Florin Road, that's it. A lot of them are just going to say, we can't find a way there.
Mr. Patton, how have they been able to, uh, get transportation in the past?
Uh, originally, the school, it was this link, the Florin Mall, originally. Then the school brought vans in, and the vans now can't happen. And so the parents, all these parents here, like parents back here, scrambling, scrambling to find a way next year, how are these kids going to go to the school that they love? The kids want to go. The kids love this school, they want to go to this school. But there might not be a way. So, sorry, you're going to have to go to a new school.
Any questions from the council members? Um, Ed, I was wondering, is there, can, can you share any way they can get to, uh, their school?
Um, I've been emailing David and his wife, uh, trying to find a solution. I haven't been getting a whole lot of sleep over the past week or so. I think it was last week that we found out, um, about this situation, and it's, without the students having to get up very early, I mean, I'll go over the suggestions I've made, whether they work for you or in your group or not, I, I don't know, but, um, the first one was there's a whole series of van pool options, um, but like you said, many of the parents don't drive, they don't have the ability to have a license. Um, but if you just had one or two parents, it might help if they could, it's a tough dynamic to play. Um, the other one was the, uh, but it requires you to get up very early in the morning, the commuter route up to 29th Street, the Route 68, RT or Route 68 comes right near the school. Um, it's an early morning rise for that, yes, mayor?
Can I ask you, do you have to have a special license for the van pool?
Yeah, uh, Class C license, uh, clean driving record, um, you know, relatively clean, you know, I mean, speeding ticket here and there, but, and, uh, and that's it, I believe. And the companies are Enterprise, VPSI, and then Secog started a company called Van Pools, or, you know, I think Van Pools, it's a nonprofit.
Do you have a estimate of the cost?
You've probably done more about that than I do, because I haven't had a chance to look exactly into the cost.
Two to $300?
Per month, yeah. Now, the transit service, if you do the math, it, it, uh, I think the problem is more the driver at this point, whether you guys can get drivers, uh, together to make that happen. So.
But that cost is for the whole van, it's not per student, per student.
It's hard that much?
Per student.
That's crazy. I'm going to, I'm going to look into this, how about, did you check, did you check CalVans? Yeah. Right. If you don't mind, can I put you in touch with the person who runs CalVans? Is, okay, that might help.
How far is the school from the floor?
Yeah, 6200 McMahon.
You, you have to come up to the, uh, microphone.
Um, the first time I hear, so maybe.
Can you say your name, sir? Can you say your name again, please?
Guillermo Tapia. Um, what I just, uh, I just hear the first, the first time, you know, the first thing, and then, uh, what I hear them, if they want to increase the ride and then save some money for, uh, people's gas or save the environment, you know, for gas, I don't know why they don't want to do this. I mean, it's for students, not for, uh, for any people, you know. I mean, any people that got a chance, like I said, the students, they want to, they choose that, uh, I'm too nervous. The students, they choose that, that high school, so, uh, I think they got that chance or opportunity to go over there. In the beginning, the, the high school, they provide a, the, the bench, you know, the ride, so now they cut out some wages or something, so now they, they can't support that, that one no more. So, uh, we try to do something like that, you know, we try, uh, they try working with a bus, a, um, a community bus, so, um, I'm too nervous, I'm sorry.
All right, take a breath, you're all right, take a breath.
What I think, you know, it's good, it's good opportunity for them, increase the ride, make some extra money, I don't say, make it free for ours, you know, we have to pay something. And also, you know, if it's like a nine or 10 people, 10 students, they go to there, imagine 10 vehicles go back and forth every day, see how much gas we can save it, and then instead of, uh, not only the gas, the, um, contamination, you know, environment, well, you guys understand probably what I try to say. So I don't know, I, I just, it's my point, you know, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do you have a question?
I have.
Councilman Cruz?
You're saying RT also goes by Consumus? Do they have a route that goes anywhere near Florin?
Uh, yeah, the Route 55 does go from Consumus River College to Florin, the, the transit stop at 65th Street. However, it doesn't run early enough for these folks right now. Um, and when I was talking about safety, I was talking about the bus stop safety, I wasn't talking about the neighborhood or anything like that. I was talking about the specific safety. Um, I live in Sacramento, I live downtown, so I'm sensitive to that.
Thank you.
Yeah, we do. Oh, no more questions? Okay. The Councilman Singleton.
I, I have a few questions. Um, I'm all for our students going to school and, uh, and getting that education. Uh, I encourage that. Uh, I wanted to know, that's quite a distance for them to try to connect from CRC to Florin Road, uh, so I, I understand their plight. Have we had any incidences at these bus stops?
I haven't looked at police records at the highway, at the 65th.
Does anybody out here know if they've been any incidents at those bus stops? Okay, um, I have a real hard time with cutting this route out for these, these people. Um, you're more or less telling them, you know, we support your education, but we're going to cut out your way to get to that education. So I have a real hard time with that at this point. Unless I hear some other good alternative that we can provide transportation for these students.
And I, I was not aware of this group, um, until last week, so that, you know, if I'd known earlier, it might, I'm not sure if we would have changed anything. Um, in public transit, there's also, uh, some legal issues with doing what's basically school bus service, and that can get around, RT does what, they do trippers to the high schools and so on that are open to the public. Um, but I do share those concerns, to some degree.
And what's the ridership like at Florin?
Um, peak of about, I believe, 50 riders on, on a high day. And so that's, you've got to divide that among all the trips that go in and out of there. We're talking a couple people on the bus.
How many students are we talking about getting to this school? It, it, so it is, those 50 are the actual students you're talking about?
115.
And that is two in from, uh, this, this preparatory school?
I mean, there are options available, I mean, if, you know, you could, you could run just, you know, one, one tripper up in the morning and one tripper up in the afternoon, uh, and still do the CRC service option, it might cost you a little bit of money. Um, you know, that, that's one option to maintain, uh, the integrity of the, yeah.
My problem is, kids right now are having a hard enough time with, uh, increasing tuitions and fuel costs going up, and I understand, uh, fuel costs for our, our services for the buses. Um, but I do believe our kids should come first, and we need to do the best we can to try to provide them that transportation to that education. Uh, Ricky, did you have something? Come on up, come on and talk to us.
Uh, Grace Molson, would you like to approach, please? Do you want to take the gavel?
No. Good evening, Grace Molson, citizen of Galt. Um, I have a, maybe a comment that maybe transportation can maybe think outside the box. I know right now the store transit system, uh, bus drivers are GPP certified and their passenger buses are 18-seater capacity. Why cannot the Secog, the city of Galt, and maybe even the county work together with this school to see if they could do a one-way trip in the morning with the 15 students, and come back in the afternoon, pick them up, and bring them home? It would be simple, they're GPP certified for going onto school grounds, which I know is a special license. Um, that might be a, some way to do it besides just all the vans going back and forth. I don't know, it might be something to think about, I don't know if it's been looked at, I'm just kind of presenting that.
Dolores, grab the mic, please.
And making it specifically for students. And then it becomes a school bus, it's covered under the education code, the vehicle code comes into play, so there were real strict requirements.
That was my only comment, thank you.
Thank you, Grace. Okay. The subscription type?
You were saying something about a one tripper up and one tripper back, could you elaborate on that for me? Ed?
Yeah, I was mentioning that a lot of transit systems run, they call it a tripper route. They'll have a route, let's say, RT Route two twelve, and it's open to the public, which just happens to go by a high school. It just happens to connect to a, but it's open to the public, but it's full of kids going to the school. Um, so, I mean, that, you know, that is an option we could explore. Um, I would hate to lose the option to CRC, um, that is also positive.
Would there be a way, I mean monetarily, obviously you're gonna have to go back and crunch numbers for us, to do both? I mean, I agree with Councilman Singleton here, our children are important to us, so anything we can do to increase their chances to get education, I'm all for.
We don't know what the cost of that other, that additional route would be to have a morning and.
I, I don't have that offhand, I don't know if Kimberly has that, or Dolores, it, I don't have that exactly offhand.
Well, I know you had mentioned safety issues, so I was just curious about that, too.
Well, the bus stop at Florin is, it's isolated.
Right.
There's not a lot of people looking at, well, CRC, it has shelters.
Uh-huh.
There's more human activity in there, more people going by.
So there's that opportunity for something possibly to happen if, to one of our students, and is, what your point is, is that correct?
Dolores, we gotta use the microphone, 'cause this is all being recorded, I'm sorry.
Yes, yes.
We actually took the trip, I did it with Kimberly and I and the mayor, we actually took the trip. The bus stop is behind the Walmart, which is, it's really abandoned. It used to be a hub in its day, however, it's no longer a hub. So depending on what time you're traveling, let's say you're traveling at night.
Right.
And it's in the winter, it's gonna be dark out there.
Right, yeah, okay. What's the latest, the students would be coming back from school, preparatory school? Five o'clock?
Do you want that for the reference?
By that time, it will be dark, like you said.
You can just repeat it.
You said, uh, five o'clock, five PM at night?
Um, Ms. Min- Minnev, do you want to make a com, you have to come up here, though, you gotta have the microphone.
See, I held my tongue that time.
I was gonna suggest, um, possibly a partnership with Crystal Ray. If they couldn't, maybe they had to stop funding the total ride for the students, but maybe they could partnership and pay a portion of it.
Are you saying the school would pay a portion, is that, um, a private school?
Yes.
And they have to pay to go there?
Yeah, they work for part of their tuition, they work.
Oh, they do.
For some of it, but I was just gonna suggest exploring with the school that you wanted to help these students and maybe form a partnership, and the school could kick in some to help relieve some of the costs.
Okay, thank you, Virginia. Please come up to the podium.
My name is Martha, that's my name, I work for Crystal Ray High School. Um, Crystal Ray High School is for us, for students, our low-income students. And right now, the school is really struggling with maintaining, um, the service that we're providing. It's come down to whether we cut classes, you know, we cut teachers, we cut, uh, staff, or we continue to provide, um, transportation, which was offered to Galt in the beginning because, um, a priest from Galt had promised to take the kids to the school. And then when that wasn't delivered, um, Crystal Ray had already twelve students, and so they were committed to doing that. But they've been doing it for five years, and they can no longer do it. Um, they will go to the Florin Mall and pick up the students from there. And they promised that already, that they can do that, but that's, that's to the extent that they could commit themselves, so.
I, I have to ask, um, I think that Galt has good high schools. Uh, we have a new Liberty Ranch High School, as well as Galt High School. And, um, maybe you would like to explain why our Galt students prefer to go out of town to, um, Crystal Ray High School?
Um, it offers, or something that nobody else offers, it offers that work-study opportunity for students that no longer, that do not have, um, well, Crystal Ray is a Catholic school, but they, the way they do it is that they provide work-study, so the students actually have a job that helps pay for half of that tuition. And it's very beneficial to students because they are growing incredibly with the responsibility of holding a job. They work one day per week, and so, but they're, they're working in a real job. So what they're getting at this school, and it, they don't get anywhere else. But that's why parents are so interested, and then students are really interested, they don't wanna stop going, so.
Are these the students tonight that are here?
No.
No. All right, thank you. Any other comments? Um, I would like to make a couple of comments. One of the things that we're trying to do here is to actually preserve the ability to offer transit. And it is not an issue whether we have the money to do various things. We're actually in jeopardy if we cannot get to the point where we can meet that twenty percent fare box requirement. And it's a, it's a law, it's not something that we, we are putting as a goal, it's something that has, that we have to abide by, or, or else the City of Galt has to make up the difference in what we don't make. Um, and I know that every council member here has a deep concern about the future of our young people. There's no question about that at all. But I have to also remind everybody that we have to live within the budget that we have to work with. And I don't think I need to remind this council that our own budget is something that we're struggling and to add additional cost to it, I don't know that we can bear that cost. If that's the case, then we would, um, possibly lose transit, uh, because we couldn't make up the difference. So there's, it's a complicated issue, I wish that we had the revenue to, to make easy choices. Um, so, having said that, I would ask, what is the pleasure of the council? You've spoken, but I'm hoping that you will spend some time to think about what we can do and what we can't do. At this point, we are to either approve the recommendations that have been presented to us, or what's the alternative, Ed? Would we delay it, explore it further?
There's a couple of alternatives, ma'am.
What's our timeline on this as well?
Well, um, if you vote to endorse the plan, uh, to take it to the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors on March thirteenth at ten AM, um, just sort of thinking in my head, I'm not a city council member. I would like to continue to work with this group at Crystal Ray, they, they have a serious situation here. Um, I'm not sure not recommending the plan is necessarily the only course of action that you could do. Uh, you know, possibly you could recommend the plan and then instruct your staff, uh, to work with this group to try to find an alternative for them. And if that's another bus running up to Sixty-Fifth Street, uh, that, that is an option. Um, we've got a little bit of time here, I, I think the bus service ends in this, at the end of the school year, that you have, and so it's the fall time frame that we're looking at here?
So, and we have the time to do that, is that what you're saying?
Well, I won't speak for the city staff.
Oh, okay.
That's just my off-the-.
Dolores.
Well, what happens is that the city chooses not to endorse it. Sacramento County will not move forward and will not bring the matter before their, uh, the Board of Supervisors. That's why they're requesting the endorsement. So they, they do wanna know, you know, what your thoughts are and, and the needs of the community. However, they will not move forward and take it to, it's my understanding, they will not take it before the Board of Supervisors.
That's correct. Mayor, City Council, um, can I just say a few things?
Sure.
Um, I think it's important, I think what the mayor said is really important for people to understand. The fare box ratio recovery is really, really critical. If we don't meet that, our, our funding for all of our programs, our transit-related programs and our roads and streets are potentially in jeopardy. And this is a recommendation in order to maximize those fare box recovery rates. Um, and so my recommendation is that you do endorse it and that we continue to explore different options, um, with the group to see if we can accommodate that, but I wouldn't be willing to put the entire service in jeopardy, um, over that route.
And, and I would also add to that, that I think currently our, uh, fare box ratio is about eight percent.
Yeah, now, you're required, here's some background information from Secog. Right now, under Transportation Development Act law, you're required to get twenty percent. Well, Secog, we've, uh, entered into discussion with our legal counsel about, um, exploring, uh, doing a county-wide calculation on that to, that way, basically, the weight of RTs, this RT is a larger system, that Galt wouldn't necessarily be looked at as an individual, or SCT wouldn't be looked as an individual system. So we're looking at, uh, designing, uh, a change in the law, uh, and we're trying to get that through, uh, between now and July to try to change the law. Um, but that wouldn't be effective until January, right now, you're operating under an exemption, uh, from the TDA fare box that's, uh, basically due to run up pretty soon here. I'm the one who issues the penalty, there's what's called the penalty year, where I have to withhold funds, you know, so it'd be making up the difference between the eight point six one and the, and the twenty percent, so roughly twelve percent, that I could not issue a check for that amount, and that you would have to come up with the additional money, because the unmet needs process says that you have to maintain your level of service or go through the, the whole process of reducing your service, you know, on a slippery slope downward. We don't have a whole lot of practice in implementing the penalty in that region.
We don't wanna be the first to.
Okay, any other comments?
If we do endorse this tonight, can we also add a caveat to it regarding having staff go back to see if they can work with this group?
Would you like to make that in the form of a motion?
Absolutely.
Well, I'm not, I'm not very kind to have someone come, so I might discuss.
Okay.
I'm sorry, but I, at this point, I'm not happy or satisfied with this, I understand the penalties and all that, but what I'm getting is that, you know, there's an acceptable amount of casualties. In my eyes, there isn't, we got people in distress here, they're gonna have issues with kids getting to school, and that's a problem for me. I understand, um, that you're doing the best you can to provide transportation. Would it be possible for them to have, get together before our next council meeting and maybe propose something before, uh, we push this through? Uh, for them to be able to see if they can figure something out for these kids up in Florin?
I don't know, Ed, is there anything?
I would imagine that it would take a while, 'cause it would have a lot of conversations with a lot of different people, including the school, see what type of things can be worked out.
But the way I understand it, they're not gonna be left on the cold, they have the entire school year to continue, correct?
That's my understanding.
So they're going to have transportation remaining in the school year, giving us a little bit of time to get this put together.
And it seems like what I heard was the main, uh, um, problem with the pool was finding someone within their, a group that can drive and qualify to drive the van, isn't, isn't that correct?
No, it, it sounds like Crystal Ray is gonna be, if, if we were to maintain the Sixty-Fifth Street stop, that Crystal Ray would pick them up at the Sixty-Fifth? Um, so, and, and CRC is about two miles from Sixty-Fifth, two to three miles? I mean, is that an option? Is it a funding issue or timing, what is it that's, that's holding that from happening? Right, right, it's probably a good twenty minutes further, okay.
Okay, I think we have a motion on the floor. And we've had discussion, and I also am gonna weigh in on this. Um, I think the motion that was made to, um, go ahead and approve the recommendation and direct staff to see if there's answers for these students to prefer to go to school out of Galt. I also want to recognize the fact, and I think we need to do that, I think we have an obligation to do that, understand our staff is understaffed, to put it mildly, and to continue to, to, uh, be generous by giving them more burdens, uh, to work with is something that we have to take the responsibility of. And that's easy for us to say that for others, but I think we need to realize what we're doing when we say that. I know staff, uh, has a history of doing whatever we ask of them, and they've done that in the past. But at some point in time, we also have to be considerate of, of their time and their goals that they're obligated under the direction of our city manager to accomplish. So, I, I applaud your motion to ask the staff to see if they can come up with an answer, but I also wanna rec- recognize the fact what we are doing to the staff, um, in asking them to take on additional burdens. Uh, maybe they will get to be the employee of, of the month and have lunch with, um, the city manager. But, um, anyway, I wanted to put that out there. Ed, did you have anything else?
Yeah, and, and let's not forget, next week, at two PM here, the Unmet Transit Needs Process. It's a much less formal process, um, in terms of, you know, it's, it's not recorded, it's on, on Channel fourteen. I don't wanna watch myself on TV. Um, well, it'll be recorded by voice if you give consent. Um, and so that's at two PM on the twenty-eighth, and that process basically determines whether the City of Galt can spend their excess LTF money for streets and roads. Because right now, they're spending about a hundred and sixty thousand a year for the Streets and Roads program. And so if you can determine that you can meet that twenty percent fare box recovery, then possibly some of that, and I know this is not popular, what I'm saying, but I'm just being honest about the Unmet Transit Needs process.
It's fact, the rotation.
Twenty-eighth, two PM.
Thank you. Okay, I remind us all that we have a motion on the floor, which I'm, yes, so do you turn it, do you?
I'm sorry, so there, is there a motion in a second?
No second, yeah.
We were interrupted before we got to the second. So I am going to second the motion and call for the votes.
Before you have the vote, I just wanna remind the council that your rules and procedure provide that a majority vote of the full council shall be required to adopt any ordinance or city policy. A simple majority of members present may act on all other matters. So, uh, my interpretation of this rule would be that, uh, this matter would be passed by a majority of those present. So two votes would pass this matter.
Okay, I think we're ready to vote.
Okay, Councilmember Singleton?
Um, I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, just so these people know, please contact me if I can give them any assistance, uh, to help get through this. Um, I understand we have a, I know we're on the vote, but I didn't get a chance to finish my comment. Is, I understand we have responsibility to our staff, we also have responsibility to our, our citizens and our community. So I just wanna keep that in line. Uh, I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, say aye to this motion.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Pan?
Aye. Motion is passed unanimously, and thank you for all your hard work, and we will continue to try to, um, find an answer for everybody, um, because transportation, we know, is so important to this community. Galt being, um, kind of a little isolated community away from a lot of services, the only hope we have for jobs, for education, for healthcare, is through transit. Uh, so I would say I take everything you've said seriously, we're gonna do everything we can to accommodate you, invite you to come to the Unmet Transit Needs on the twenty-eighth here at two o'clock, and we will continue to service the people of the community. Thank you.
Next item, adoption of mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for a conceptual, conceptual future Simmerhorn Commercial Shopping Center project.
Thank you, good evening, mayor and council. Uh, with the construction of the new Central Galt Interchange and planned future growth east of the city, um, city council recognized that the time is ripe for, to market the property, that we commonly known as Simmerhorn Commercial, um, to develop as a premier retail shopping center. Um, this approximately forty-one acre site is located on the east side of State Route ninety-nine between.
ninety-nine between Simmerhorn Road and the newly constructed, uh, A Street extension of the Central Galt Interchange. It's zoned highway commercial and has been designated for commercial use in the city's general plan for over twenty years. Uh, as part of this effort, staff was asked to identify and evaluate the infrastructure needs and potential environmental impacts, uh, associated with development of the site, so that it would clear the way for C Q. and allow a streamlined review process for a future commercial developer. Uh, to that end, the redevelopment agency hired Schudan Consulting to prepare a California Environmental Quality Act analysis, uh, of a conceptual shopping center on this property. Ms. Schudan is here tonight, uh, technical assistance was also provided by Corolla Engineering for Utilities and Omni Means for Traffic. Uh, the Simmerhorn Commercial property was the site of a proposed shopping center a few years back, um, as you might recall, it included Walmart as the anchor store and had a mix of retail service and restaurant uses on that site. Uh, as you also know, Walmart later opted to locate, relocate, uh, up onto Twin Cities Road, so this shopping center kind of lost its anchor and ultimately, the project was withdrawn. However, we have used that old site plan as sort of a general guideline for what a future assumed development would look like on this site. Um, that site plan proposed about a twenty-five percent floor area ratio, with the rest of the site devoted to parking lots and internal roadway and landscaping. Twenty-five percent floor area ratio, that's about building coverage, basically, um, is typical of most retail developments, the Rayleigh Shopping Center, for example, is about twenty-three percent at build-out, and it's well within the fifty percent maximum that's allowed in that zoning district. Um, since that prior site plan was obviously a realistic, real-world design, we did use that as a guide, assumed the same general layout and proportional mix of use for the conceptual project. However, we did bump up the floor area ratio to about thirty percent, um, just to accommodate more flexibility in the design and ultimate, uh, ultimately increase the utility of the C Q. analysis. So, the analysis, uh, was for a five-hundred-thousand-square-foot shopping center on the site. Uh, site access was assumed via an extension of the newly-aligned Crystal Way, uh, from A Street to the site entrance, and then ultimately along the east boundary of the site all the way up to connect with Simmerhorn Road, uh, that is proposed in the general plan circulation element as well. The general plan circulation diagram also includes an eventual connection of A Street eastward to Corillian Boulevard and then ultimately to Marengo Road. While that extension is not necessary to support full build-out of this project, um, it, the right-of-way and circulation improvements on this site will need to accommodate that improvement. Uh, initial study mitigated negative declaration was prepared, a public review period was advertised commencing January eleventh and it ended February ninth. Um, staff received four comment letters during that review period, the Air Quality Management District, California Regional Water Quality Control Board, County Department of Transportation, and Caltrans all submitted letters. Uh, staff responded to those comments on Attachment Six in your packet, we recently just amended that attachment, and I've handed those out to you tonight, um, so you wanna look at that attachment for your final action tonight. Uh, some of the comments resulted in minor revisions to the document and/or the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, those revisions are for clarification purposes, they did not raise any new significant environmental impacts, uh, nor did they change the final conclusion of the documents. The primary change that we just made to the responses was, uh, to accommodate a Caltrans concern. Uh, Caltrans originally commented that they would like to see a project-level traffic impact study done once a development application is submitted. Staff's original response to them was that that is already a requirement of the Galt general plan policies, therefore, it was not necessary to add it as a mitigation measure, however, uh, we did meet with them and they felt much more comfortable if we just included it in the C Q. documents, so we have made that, uh, adjustment, and that is a new, we basically changed mitigation measure twenty-five to twenty-five A. and then added a twenty-five B. Uh, Attachment Five to your document is the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, it's been revised slightly to reflect the same edits that were made to the responses to comment, so I did not hand out a new one, um, but those same revisions have been made. The cost for preparation of the environmental analysis was paid for, uh, by redevelopment agency bond funds, uh, additional C Q. costs will include the required department-efficient game, county filing fees, uh, that is listed in the, uh, the recognized obligation payment schedule that you have approved tonight. The required findings for approving the M N. D. and the mitigation monitoring and reporting plan are included in the staff report and the adopting resolution, uh, staff recommends approval and is here to answer any questions you might have.
Questions, council?
None for me, I'm really impressed with-
Singleton? No questions? Would you read the action, recommended action, please?
Tonight, the recommended action is to adopt a resolution approving the C Q. mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for a conceptual future Simmerhorn Commercial Shopping Center project.
Okay, you've heard the recommended action, is there a motion?
Some of-
A second?
A second.
Okay, we have a first and a second, vote, call vote, please.
Okay, Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. So, the resolution is passed unanimously, um, we have no communication, so then, um, what is this, adjourn and reconvene to the Galt City Council?
Looks like leftover.
Okay, all right, you can see some, uh, okay, so, city clerk, would you like to straighten us out here with your report?
Yes, uh, just a couple reminders, on February twenty-sixth, the Commission on Aging will be meeting at five fifteen in the California Room over at the Parks and Recreation Department. On February twenty-eighth, the Unmet Transit Needs at two P M. again, here in the council chambers, that takes us into March, on March fifth, our youth committee meeting will be held at six thirty P M. in the City Hall Community Room, that takes us to our next meeting on March sixth.
Okay, next we have comments by staff.
Comments?
No comments, okay, comments by city council, city, uh, city, Councilmember Singleton?
I think I've commented enough, thanks.
No?
I'm good, thanks.
You're always welcome. Councilmember Cruz?
I just wanna, again, thank Sandy and your, your, uh, your group, I read through that, it's a very good job.
Good group.
Helped us make, make use of it.
Sandy, enter group.
Well, employees, council-
I know, we're, we're, we're an intimate group here. Okay, any other comments?
None.
I have a couple announcements, um, McCaffrey Middle School is having a Texas Hold'em on March, March ninth, from six to seven, it's a fundraiser to help that school. Um, also, I wanted to say that I attended the California Economic Summit in Folsom this past, uh, week, and, um, it's, you know, there's no doubt in my mind that what we need to be focusing on in this community as much as possible is jobs, uh, and some economic stability, so that we can do all the things we want. Hopefully, I came back with some ideas I'll be working on, I attended the, um, caucus on food and agriculture, and I do have a couple of projects that I am, that I'm working on along those lines, to see if we can bring some jobs back to Galt. Um, also, I would like to share with you, we, we talk about the air quality boards and their regulations and all of that, but, uh, there was an article in the paper about how subsidies help farmers replace pumps, cut emissions, and one of our local, uh, farmers, Carl Maggio, ranch manager at Pacific Agralands Vineyard in Galt, was able to get help from the, um, air quality boards, uh, to purchase, um, uh, merch, not merchandise, but equipment that will help them comply with air quality requirements, it is something that we, that we have to do, so, uh, I just want to know, want you to know that sometimes we can do a good thing with, uh, these agencies.
Mayor, can I ask real quick?
Sure.
Like, everything you were mentioning, what's it to help the school, uh, fund, I mean, if they're needing help?
I think the P T. A. is, is sponsoring it, um-
Oh, so it's just general, and whatnot, oh, okay.
Helping buy things that they need, um, let me see, was there anything else I need to say?
I'm interrupting.
I have one thing, okay.
Um, in the, in the packet, if you looked at the March Planning Commission meeting, it, the date is wrong, the date and time are both wrong, the planning commission meeting will be held on March eighth at six thirty P M. in the council chambers, uh, on the, on the schedule, it says March fifteenth, so that is incorrect, March eighth at six thirty P M.
Okay, if there are no other comments, I think it's been a busy night, a passionate and emotional night, so with that, I will adjourn the meeting at, what is it, twenty minutes to nine?
Eight forty-one.
We are adjourned.